Let's call the Human Resources Committee to order, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Wilper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Sir. Motion, a second on the agenda, is any discussion of questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Want to take a single request?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lind.
I move we approve requests from the Community Development Director to fill a position of Administrative Secretary at the Community Development Department and make an appointment.
Second.
Motion, a second on this request, is any discussion of questions here as to this?
I think it's a repetitive question, but again, we have no wiggle room on a starting secretary at $21 an hour, is that correct? I mean, we've got no negotiation, no nothing that somebody's replacing, somebody's been there 30 years, we replace them at that rate, rather than at a new hire rate, correct?
Not at this point. We certainly have done that in some positions where we start them out at a lesser rate for their first six month probationary period and that sort of stuff, but we don't have steps built in. That is something that we're working on and hoping to kind of do over the course of this next 12 months is build steps, and we don't have steps at this time though for that position.
So that's part of the union agreement was, I think?
This is in the union position. It's an admin secretary position, but we were working on it as far as building a performance evaluation plan so that there's something in place, two new steps.
And I think this actually is less than the person that's in the position now.
It is less than the person that's in the position now. There used to be different wages for those positions, so this is a lesser amount, this is the amount that all admin secretaries come in at now, all the new hires.
But it's not a union?
It's not a union position.
So I mean, I guess this is just about double what it would be in the private sector?
For an executive?
For a secretary.
Department. This isn't a, we have secretary positions, this is a higher level position than a secretary. This is an admin secretary. Secretary positions do come in at a lower amount, but those are bargaining positions.
Any other questions? Here, now, you can roll call.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion, a second, and adjourned, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Boards and Commission Committee, a meeting to order if you agree the role, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
And Mr. Hart and Mr. Jones are asked.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the agenda, any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda, plenty of gentlemen would like to take those items.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file Mayor Clark's recommendation of the following appointments. First is Rudy Jones for the, on the Board Commission of the Met Transit Board, it's an expiration date of 6/30/2018. Secondly is Bonetta Culp for the, on the Board Commission for the Met Transit Board, expiration date same. Third is Lon Camire for the Met Transit Board, and fourth is Arlene Humble for the Airport Board, expiration date on Lon Camire's was the same as the other two, 6/32/18, 2018, and for expiration date for Arlene Humble on the Airport Board would be June 30th of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on those four appointments, any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those appointments are approved.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Committee meeting to order, Madam Clerk, would you please read the role?
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Wilper?
Here.
And Mr. Jones is asked.
Motion approved, the agenda and the minutes of the June 22nd meeting is proposed.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have new business.
Madam Chairperson, we've got some travel requests there, first we have Patrol Officer Saunders for the Olaressen Katzukum Instructor School, Johnston, Iowa, July 13th, cost not to exceed $215. Patrol Officer Saunders for the ASP Baton Instructor Recertification School in Johnston, Iowa, August 19th, 2015, and a cost not to exceed $190. Sergeant Richter, Open Site Rifle Instructor Recertification, Johnston, Iowa, October 21st, at an amount not to exceed $265. Patrol Officer Sullivan, Precision Driving Instructor Recertification, Johnston, Iowa, September 2nd, amount not to exceed $190. Steve Carey, Confined Space Rescue Recertification, Albert City, Iowa, July 7th, cost not to exceed $125. And finally, CDL Employees and Supervisors, Mandatory Training for Drug and Alcohol Awareness by Covenant Medical Center, Waterloo, Iowa, May 13th, 19th, and 28th, not to exceed $600. I mean, we approve all those items?
I'll second those.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion?
I had a question on item number one, if we could have a little overview of what that is?
Pepper spray.
I think it's laughing, but I'm not sure.
The Antelika Director of Safety, that is pepper spray, OC spray, and it's a recertification for Officer Saunders. We pay to have our officers certified to be instructors so they can come back and provide instruction to the other officers, and the state requires certification.
So that is for certification, as is, I see, all the other ones?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items pass, and we have CreoX.
Madam Chair, I'll take those.
Mr. Wilper.
Building maintenance amount and estimated shipping and handling, $7,448.83 to provide network service, new computers and printers to the parking ramp. Building maintenance amount and estimated shipping and handling, $5,538.29 for office furniture and build out for parking. Engineering amount and estimated shipping and handling, $25,845 plus $50 for shipping and handling for a Trimbo R10 GPS bundle. Engineering amount and estimated shipping and handling, $11,000 for the right-of-way video log. Leisure services amount and estimated shipping and handling, $7,250 for floor recoding of the gym and fitness studio at the Sports Bikes. Leisure services amount and estimated shipping and handling, not to exceed $5,000 for additional right-of-way mowing and cleanup along San Marnean. Planning amount and estimated shipping and handling, $1,300 for appraisal for the northwest corner of Utica and Broadway Streets. Planning amount and estimated shipping and handling, $51,500 for the second half of the fiscal year '15 economic development base payment of $14,250 plus an incentive payment of $41,500. Police amount and estimated shipping and handling, $18,482.43 plus $125 shipping and handling. This is for the Pelco Video Security Surveillance System for the property evidence building. Police amount and estimated shipping and handling, $2,940 for vinyl graphics for the fiscal year '16 squad cars. Police and estimated shipping and handling, $21,000 for the fiscal year '16 uniform supply purchase. Street amount and estimated shipping and handling, $7,638.92 for replacement welder. Street amount and estimated shipping and handling, $2,836.95 plus $100 shipping and handling for a converter muffler for dump truck B06. Traffic operations amount and estimated shipping and handling, $12,435 plus $75 shipping and handling for Veriskam cameras. Waterloo Fire Department amount and estimated shipping and handling, $1,660 for a 3% AR-AFFF firefighting phone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion?
I had a quick question, Paul on the flooring, is that, I mean, is that to be expected that that was going to need to have that attention?
Yes, Paul heading Leisure Services Director, it's an annual maintenance that's recommended by Anderson Ladd, who is the installer. So, we'll be doing this annually.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? You good, Steve?
Yeah, thank you.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items pass. I move that we approve the Budget Line Item Amendment, which is on file in Ms. Chair's office, and also that we pay the bills this week, which are $3,154,646.53. Three comma one five four comma six four six point five three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items pass, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this, we have a small crowd tonight, but anyway, welcome to all of you for this Monday, June 29th, regularly scheduled meeting in the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, would you start us with the role, please?
Certainly. Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Wilper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you very much, as you can tell, ladies and gentlemen, in vacation time, Councilman Hart and Councilman Jones are both with their family on vacation somewhere, but if you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer, it would be much appreciated. Thank you very much, our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Rudy Jones, our Community Development Director. Rudy, please.
Please join us in signing off the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, may we sit.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wilper?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of June 22nd, 2015 regular session as proposed.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding either the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. I need to start tonight with recognizing our July, excuse me, our June, it's our July. Boy, am I confused, our July Team Member of the Month, my, my error. Todd Deerfield, anyway, is our July Team Member of the Month. For those of you that don't know Todd, you're missing something. Todd is just a fabulous guy, he's not with us tonight, he's probably out cutting down trees or something. Todd is our forester in Waterloo, and he does just an incredible job, and he's always been a busy fellow, but with the advent of the Emerald Ashpour coming to Waterloo, Todd is managing the forestry department and doing just a wonderful job, and it was my pleasure to be able to recognize him as the July 2015 Team Member of the Month. So, Todd, if you're watching, I hope you are a congratulist. All right, moving on.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wilper?
I move to approve the consent agenda, that's 1A through B6, and within that are the bills payment, current.
The bills this week are $3,154,646.53.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments at all on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm very pleased to announce, Chris, why don't you stand up for me, please? Chris Youngblood, welcome, Chris is our new IT Director in the city of Waterloo. Hopefully, we're going to appoint him tonight, Counsel, and he is here to start with us, so, Chris, welcome aboard, we're looking forward to it, hopefully have a long relationship, and thank you for saying yes to Waterloo, we appreciate it very much, so, thanks, Chris. All right, item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the request to sell and convey for $1 plus cost a portion of city-owned property, commonly known as the former Grand Hotel site at the intersection of West Mullen Avenue and Jefferson Street, to Grand Investments LLC in accordance with the Master Development Agreement and Supplemental Development Agreement with Grand Investments LLC.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we receive any written objections to this item, item number two on tonight's agenda?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number two, the conveyance of the old Grand Hotel site? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing? Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance for $1 plus cost a portion of city-owned property, commonly known as the former Grand Hotel site at the intersection of West Mullen Avenue and Jefferson Street, to Grand Investments LLC in accordance with the Master Development Agreement and Supplemental Development Agreement with Grand Investments LLC, and authorize city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, thank you. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move or receive and file proof of publication or notice of public hearing on the request by Hammond Hills Development to vacate portions of the five-foot utility easement located on lots 146 and 147 of Hammond Hills Sixth Edition.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file, item number three?
There were not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the Hammond Hills Development? A second time.
I move we close the hearing and receive the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Very good, Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries.
I move we receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by Hammond Hills Development to vacate portions of the five-foot utility easement located on lots 146 and 147 of Hammond Hills Sixth Edition.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, I'm assuming we can dispense with that?
Yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, just an FYI, all of the items tonight that might be appropriate to suspend the rules, we can't, since we have two council admissions, so we will just not go there with suspending rules. And we will, yes.
Mr. Mayor, that goes for resolutions as well, doesn't it?
No, it's not for resolutions, it's just, the only thing we can suspend the rules on our hearings.
But, I mean, as far as a different vote count?
No, we still have to have four.
We still have to have four, I mean, a simple majority doesn't win on resolutions as well.
To pass anything for the resolutions tonight, we have to have the majority of the council, which is still four.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number four is a motion received and filed proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the rezone request from Yulermo and Roxanne Galvez to rezone 3.62 acres from A1 Agriculture District to R1 1 and 2 Family Resident District for the purpose of constructing one new single-family home generally located north of 2533 Burton Avenue.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, any objections?
There were not.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak either for or against the proposed residence at 2533 Burton Avenue? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone of certain property.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, item five.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wilper?
Item five is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of a public hearing, that's the request to vacate a 16-foot utility drainage easement located at 1921 Hawthorne Avenue.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, any objections?
There were not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the easement at 1921 Hawthorne Avenue?
David Dryer, 3145 West 4th Street, I guess I just have a point of interest, should have probably stood up on number three, but when we vacate these utility and drainage easements, are there any utilities and drainage through there, and if there are, and we vacate it, then the property owner owns it, something happens to that utility or that drainage part, are we liable for repair, replacement, da-da-da-da-da?
Noel, why don't you explain what we're doing here, please, sir? Thank you.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, as a part of any vacate request by ordinance, it is required to go to the Planning Commission, then to the City Council. As part of any of our Planning Commission agenda items, we have what's called the Technical Review Committee, which consists of a notification to all the city departments, as well as all the utility companies in the area, so obviously, our recommendation is based on whether or not all those entities are willing and able to vacate the easements. In terms of both of the easements on tonight's, there are no utilities that are being damaged by these vacates, either there's no utilities being located in them, or no drainage needed through that area due to the new development, or the utilities that were in them are being relocated with the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, David. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to, lost my place here.
Close the hearing?
Close the hearing and receive and file oral comments, along with recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I lose my place often, I don't want to get, print. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by Arcade Waterloo LLC to vacate a 16-foot utility drainage easement located at 1921 Hawthorne Avenue.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, item six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion received and filed proof of publication and notice of public hearing on a Bestos abatement for 619 Franklin Street, the former American Legion Building.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, I got ahead of myself on that one, too, thank you. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file, item number six?
There were no written objections, but now that we get that, there's two of us.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this item? Franklin Street, the American Legion Building, ask Bestos abatement, a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive, and, well?
Just close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Yeah, close the hearing, very good, motion and a second? Counsel, I'll give you another chance, do you have any comments regarding this item?
Wilper?
Wilper, yes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole? Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive and file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
I apologize for that, I have a hard copy and didn't have one. The first bid is from ATC Associates Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, the bid bond was for 5%, and the bid amount was for $49,650. for $49,650.49,650.00. The second bid was from Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $38,5038,500.00.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution awarding the asbestos abatement contract to Advanced Environmental Testing and Abatement Incorporated for asbestos abatement of 619 Franklin Street, the former American Legion Building, in the amount of $38,500.
Second. Madam Clerk, please. Roll call vote.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lind?
I move to receive, file, approve of publication and notice of public hearing, which is for the fiscal year 2016, 11th Street Bridge Repairs, Contract Number 890.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the 11th Street Bridge Repairs? A second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Counsel, do you have any comment? I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications and form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we don't have hard copies of the bid tabs tonight. I'm assuming somebody failed to make them.
Either that or just bring them up.
Okay. Well, if you would read them to us from your little computer, please.
Yes. The first bid is from PCI Roads of St. Michael, Minnesota. Their bid bond was for 5% and their bid amount was for $320,445.75.320,445.75. The second bid is from Peterson Contractors of Ryanbeck, Iowa. Their bid bond is for 5% and their bid amount is for
Very good. Thank you. Item number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper, please.
Item eight is a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of a public hearing. That's for the fiscal year 2015 FAA project for the payment rehabilitation of taxiway Alpha East and to perform crack sealing surfaces to the center section of runway 12-30 at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, written comments on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the crack sealing program at the airport? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, adopt a resolution approving specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
I'd adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Yes, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file, consider, instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to airport director for review.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you do us the honors?
There was one bid from Aspro, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the total bid amount was for $861,208.50.861,208.50.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Let's do resolutions three at a time, please, if somebody would take nine, 10, and 11.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving variance to Blackhawk County Extension and Outreach for the firing of pellet guns at an organized event. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing an extension to the City of Waterloo purchasing procedures to approve the purchase of one S30 tenant sweeper for the enforcement of parking in Waterloo in the amount of $48,146 without taking of bids. And number 11 is a resolution approving change order number three for a net increase of $6,141.62 for the fiscal year 2014, Fourth Street Bridge Slope Protection and River Wall Repairs, Contract Number 855, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Could I just, for the record, number 11 should be a resolution. It's actually just a motion. That's a typo.
Okay. We're still going to take a roll call vote on all three. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of the three?
Mr. Mayor, one question on number 10. When we do that, do we have... Obviously, there's some procedure or code or something to let us do that, not take bids?
There is. Craig, please.
Well... I guess maybe I'm not the... On the procedural question, maybe Suzie should answer that, but I can answer it. Craig Clark, building official. So how we came about this is, I mean, we sort of did take bids. The reason we can use a state bid to buy this. The public parking is actually buying multiple units right now, so we are piggybacking off their purchasing, which is cheaper than the state bid. So that's why we're asking you to waive that policy because we can buy it cheaper with them than going through the state bid process.
Thanks.
And I'll just add that we have received a legal opinion from our legal staff. It's a city policy that we take bids at this rate, so it's not voiding the state requirements. It's a city policy, so you guys have the ability to...
So we're just waiving our policy.
Correct.
Yep, got you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we just have Eric tell us a little bit about item number 11? I think we've talked about that in the past, but just for the folks watching at home to know what that change order is about there on the bridge.
Eric Thorst, City Engineer. If you remember, we're working under the Fourth Street Bridge on the south side, and they ran into some additional walls and door frames and things that were under there from the old Davidson Building that everybody thought had been totally removed, but it had not. So we had some additional cost to remove those things that were buried under there.
Thank you.
That turned out to be quite a project before it was over with. Any further questions? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. Those carried. 12, 13, and 14.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Peterson Contracts, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa at a total cost of $251,627.57 for the FY 2014 Fourth Street Bridge Slope Protection and River Wall Repairs, Contract Number 855. 13 is another resolution approving MLK Drive Railroad Crossing Surface Repair Agreement with the Iowa DOT and the Chicago Central and Pacific Railroad Company for the installation of 117 lineal-foot concrete surface crossing at the MLK Junior Drive Railroad Crossing. 14 is a resolution approving West Airline Highway Railroad Crossing Surface Repair Agreement with the Iowa DOT and the Chicago Central and Pacific Railroad Company for the installation of a 115 lineal-foot concrete surface crossing at the West Airline Highway Railroad Crossing.
Ms. Cole, why don't you go ahead and do 15? It's the same thing.
And 15 is a resolution approving the Roof Avenue Railroad Crossing Surface Repair Agreement with the Iowa DOT and the Chicago Central and Pacific Railroad Company for the installation of a 72 lineal-foot concrete surface crossing at the Roof Avenue Railroad Crossing.
Second. Very good. Counsel, questions or comments regarding any of those?
Just, Carolyn was reading off her hard copy, and on the computer, the number 12 had the 625 on the computer, not 627. It was red.
Oh, I have 625 on this, too.
Oh, okay.
You misstated. Sorry.
I did.
Good catch, Patrick. Very good. They're also of Ryanbeck, not from Waterloo. Anyway. Any further questions or comments on 12, 13, 14, or 15? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
16 is adopting a resolution approving a contract agreement between Waterloo Commission on Human Rights and the U.S. Equal Opportunity Commission. Item number 17 is adopting a resolution approving annual renewal agreement with safety, national casualty, at a cost not to exceed $167,688 per year to provide workers' compensation stop-loss coverage. And item 18 is adopting a resolution approving renewal of general cyber and auto liability, law enforcement, public officials, errors and omissions, and umbrella insurance for a total premium of $940,062 with Travelers Insurance together with recommendation of insurance committee.
Mr. Schmidt, I'll ask you the same as Ms. Cole. 19 is insurance item also. Why don't you take that one, too, please?
Number 19 is adopting a resolution approving renewal of property insurance for a total premium of $363,352 with Chubb Insurance together with recommendation of approval of the insurance committee.
Second.
Very good. Thank you very much. Questions or comments, counsel, regarding 16, 17, 18, or 19?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lind?
Suzie, on 17, 18, and 19, did we buy all that from the same agent? The same agent worked with us to do that?
Yes, yes, one agent.
Do they... Do we pay them anything in addition to the commission they earn on the premiums?
Only for the workers' comp. They have a risk management fee where they assist us with our risk management program.
What do we pay them?
I want to say it's approximately $8,000 or $9,000, somewhere in there.
We self-insure work comp, and this is the...
The stop-loss.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Can we finish the resolutions with 20, 21, and 22, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city clerk to certify against certain parcels unpaid snow removal, weed mowing, and lot cleanups. 21 is a resolution to approve of Vanderwall Associates' proposed scope of work for 2015-2016 agreement for implementation of services for the City of Waterloo in the amount of up to $72,000 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute any necessary documents. And 22 is a resolution approving award of Hotel Motel Tax Council discretionary funds to the Ground Museum District in the amount of $10,000.
Second. Very good. Thank you. Counselman, questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms... Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah. On Thursday, on number 21, one of the things that I've been concerned about is exactly what that money, $72,000 a year, it says up to $72,000 a year, goes for. And I've requested, and I did receive the contract, also received the last year's invoices and that. And I know they state specifically in a given month what amount was to be paid by the city in their terms, but I would just like to see that go to the city council on a regular basis, a monthly basis, those statements, so that we could see what we... What the taxpayers are getting for the consultation fee or whatever fee you referred to this at $72,000 a year. And I think and I see, I don't know, Lisa left, but I would like to see that same thing from Greater Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber that we see on a monthly basis what... Because I believe the amount that is... The city is paying, that the taxpayers are paying to them is like $70,000, $75,000 a year that we see on a monthly basis also, what we're paying for and how those monies are being expended. So...
Mr. Morrissey, I would tell you, I don't think it's any problem at all to get you the Vanderwall bills. You can forward those to counsel as we get them. We do get monthly bills from Vanderwall. The Alliance and Chamber is a little bit different in that they bill us twice a year for those, and the reason that they come, try to do it quarterly to give us an update, and they provide a report to you at that time. We don't get monthly reports from the Alliance and Chamber. Am I correct in that? Our monthly bills are invoices. So it's a semi-annual invoice from them, the quarterly updates and reports. So I can't give you anything monthly from the Alliance and Chamber, but...
Is that something, Mr. Mayor, that we could request from them? At least on a quarterly basis, every three months?
We get them.
Well, we get quarterly reports from them.
But could we, as a council, get those?
You do. When they come and present to us, they'll give you a package that will have that information with them.
But I'm specifically referring to those that refer just to Waterloo, not to the entire Cedar Valley, which is what I requested of Lisa, and Lisa got those to me here in the last week that stated specifically what projects they were working on that was for just Waterloo.
I will make that request, and I'm quite sure that the Alliance will do it.
Okay. Mayor, I wanted to say the contract with the Alliance works differently. So Vanderwall,
just Waterloo.
I will make that request, and I'm quite sure the Alliance will do it.
Okay. Mayor, I wanted to say the contract with the Alliance works differently. So Van De Waal, we pay them based on how much, kind of the quantity, volume of work they do for us monthly, so that's why we get monthly invoices to pay. The Alliance, their contract is drafted differently, so what they bill us is based on their contract. So it doesn't, the billing and the actual invoice doesn't really lend itself to a monthly, it's not a monthly effort time put into it. So you could maybe change the reporting period, as Mayor referred to, but I don't think it's ever going to look the same. I don't think you're going to get an invoice from the Alliance showing this employee worked on something for the city of Waterloo for 20 hours this month. It's just that the contract is completely different.
Yeah, but I think, without trying to put words in Mr. Counselor Morrissey's mouth, is that what you're looking for is an accountability that they are working for the city of Waterloo.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And I think we can, we can do that on a more specific-
And a further example would be tonight on, I believe, the consent agenda, there was $41,500 in incentives plus a $14,400, or something like that. And that was Greater Cedar Valley Alliance.
Right.
And having the accountability as to what exactly that, those incentives were for the city of Waterloo.
Noel, would you explain our criteria, kind of, and-
And I know, Mr. Mayor, that this is diverting from Van De Waal Associates, but to me, they're a part and parcel of what we're paying for something.
Okay, and since they are, kind of, I'm going to allow this conversation to go forward, but that's fine.
Okay, thanks.
So you want me to expound upon the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance one a little bit more? Or both? Just a little. Not necessarily Van De Waal. You understand the Van De Waal kind, you will get those on a monthly basis.
I understand, yes.
Is that correct? Okay. If you could just briefly explain, Noel, how we come about, how the Alliance comes about fulfilling their contract to the city.
Sure. Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, and I believe there was an email attachment to the finance request that showed how they met their incentives. There's basically a $14,250 base payment that they can get twice a year. There's a $5,000 quarterly payment that they can get, obviously four times a year, so that's usually broken apart into two quarters and two quarters, so about another $10,000 per request. And then the rest is all incentive payment, and that is based on performance of creating a certain amount of acres of development, a certain amount of jobs at a higher wage of pay, and they are available to get a certain amount of funding, I think it's $5,000 per job, per job created and acres developed. So that's all broken out in the billing. When we approve the billing, it'll all be broken out as to exactly which projects that occurred to. I think this last time that was for CPM, Ross Camp Corporation did a small office expansion up there that created two jobs, and the rest of it was mainly Conagra's expansion out the airport area.
I'll try to get you more information. I'll try to get at the Waterloo specific. Yes, Mr. Lind?
Noel, could you send the council the email you sent to me, explain?
Sure.
I kind of asked the same question, and you gave a great explanation.
Okay.
Mr. Schmidt?
No, if you want to stay back up there. You know, I know there's been question in the past about, we've been doing business with Van De Waal now for 10 or 12 years, maybe something like that, you know, whether or not there's some light at the end of the tunnel, but I think it would behoove us to have Noel maybe explain to the folks a little bit more about what all it is we get from Van De Waal now that, you know, the downtown development is well along, because I think they do provide some services maybe that everybody's not aware of, so if you want to give us a little overview of that, Noel.
Going back in history, of course, we hired Van De Waal back when John Deere had come to the city and asked for more improvements of the downtown area, more improvements of the community to help them retain a workforce here. So that was how the Riverfront Renaissance started. Van De Waal drew up those plans, and since that time, we received the Vision Iowa funding. We adopted the Downtown Master Plan and all that that's basically put forth, uses on blocks, a future land use plan specific to the downtown, different areas for different hospitalities, entertainment and all that. So we've got a lot of the framework in place. I would say now at this point, when we're working with Van De Waal, it's more on a project-specific basis, but they've been very helpful. They brought Rodney Blackwell to town to help with the Tech Works project, and obviously he's the developer that is moving ahead with this great project finally. They've helped immensely with the design and the layout and the planning for urban designs for the Grand Hotel site. They're working with us now in the Wonder Bread project. The Flea Market site is another residential project that we're working with them on. So again, they've really helped to help us draw developers, to draw that private investment part of the overall downtown scheme, to try and get developers here with their drawings, with their layouts, with their ideas for how they've seen it designed in other downtown areas. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Noel, could you kind of quick give us a WDC-Van De Waal relationship, how that fits together?
This goes back, I believe, to Mayor Roof. The WDC was put together to try and put together a private entity of the larger employers of Mid-America and Deere being the two largest that were initially formed in there, and others could be a part of the WDC as they contributed money. But it was a Waterloo downtown corporation to specifically focus on the downtown, obviously with the casino coming into place, and then a certain amount of funds being dedicated to downtown that has helped to boost the overall development of the downtown amenities. Van De Waal obviously works for the city of Waterloo. They also work in hand-in-hand with the WDC for the downtown development and working through the, both of them working together. We've now put together, the mayor created the project management team, and there's also a design-build management team for projects downtown that we work through to specifically try and make projects meet the goals and strategies in the Downtown Master Plan.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll support this if they quit calling me Bob Greenwood.
I talked to Marta about that last week, as a matter of fact. I think he's scratched, and I think you're in. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, number 23, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Number 23 is a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time. Adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended city of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in this section as 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment for 1033 Decathlon Drive. That's a request by David Welsch for a site plan amendment to amend the conditions of a zoning in a C1 CZ conditional zoning district located at 1033 Decathlon Drive.
Very good. It's a third reading, but I'll still ask. Counsel, do you have any questions? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. We do have one request from our good friend, Don Miller. Don has called in and asked for additional time, so Don, you're going to be first up, and you've got five minutes. Use them wisely.
Don Miller, 707 Stone Quarry Road, Waterloo. I'm a little confused, so I've come to the mountain to find out what the truth is, and it involves the Tech Works, too. Back in, I think it was February, the Courier or the Cedar Valley Business Monthly interviewed Mr. Blackwell, and I'm not going to read the review, but there were about four statements attributed to him, and in essence, they were that they had all the funding in place as of the 4th of February, I believe, and they would need no other infusion. And he said that they were immediately going to proceed and would probably start construction in April. And I've asked the building department had they received any working plans and specifications. I assumed if they're going to be ready to go by April, they would have forwarded those. The department said that they hadn't received any working drawings or specs. Well, now, the other day, the Courier had an article on the city boosting a Tech Works commitment by $8,000. And here's where my-
I worked for $8,000.
Or $8 million. I don't do numbers well. Back in February, we had all the money in place. Now, I've been out of town occasionally, so I must have missed the point where it was indicated why we need $8 million more. Now, in the article, I've read it about seven times, and I have yet to find in there why we are contributing $8 million more. And so that's why I've come to the mountain, so that you can explain that to me. And I don't hear real well, so.
Okay. Don, you mentioned that you don't do numbers very well, and neither do I. I think over a period of time, I could probably explain it to you, but I'll refer to the mountain keeper to explain it to you, please.
Well, usually when I talk to her, it costs me 75 cents, so I-
Well, as long as she's not making you copies, you're okay.
This one might cost you more, Don. Michelle Whedon, our Chief Financial Officer. So what Rodney was quoted as saying in February, that actually included the Iowa reinvestment district funding, and that's what this $8 million in bonding refers to. So that will be repaid with money earned by the projects. So even though the city's borrowing it, the district will be repaying it. And for a lot of reasons, there were issues at the state of Iowa with the historic tax credit program. That's what kind of gummed that up, so that we weren't able to start in April, and hopefully now it will be starting by September.
I might add, too, one of the things that's a little, maybe confusing to you, Don, and is certainly different than other programs that we've had through the state, is there's no upfront money on this. So when the Iowa reinvestment district awarded this project the money that we requested, it has to come from somewhere in the beginning. So this $8 million has to come from somewhere. The city is bonding for it to be given to the project so they can start the project, and then as sales begin and sales tax are collected, the city will be paid back that revenue. Did I say that correctly?
That's absolutely correct, yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I think it's important to note, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, the Welper is paying the interest on the bonds. We're not paying the interest on the bonds, which is a great deal.
Okay, they're paying interest.
That's correct.
Now, have they, any idea of when they're going to get started?
My current estimate, we hope closing date will be around September, but we have a lot of, there are a lot of things that need to happen. We've got plating to do and get the final ordinance in place and bond hearings, and there's a number of actions. But there are a lot of people putting a lot of effort into that.
We're very, very hopeful, Don, that we have a realistic start date of towards the end of September, 1st of October for this project. And I want to, I want to say one more thing that you touched on, and again, jump in at any time. One of the things that gummed things up right off the bat in February, after we got the IRD award, the IEDA, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, chose Waterloo as the number-one project that was applied, we got that award, and then Department of Revenue kind of mucked things up with state historic tax credits that this project always, also was receiving. So we got put right off the bat where we thought we were done. It got messed up with state historic tax credits. That had to be sorted out first before we went forward. That did, but it slowed the project down a good two months, I would say, until we got the historic tax credit thing figured out, and then we moved forward with everything else.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think it's rather important to get this show on the road.
Certainly.
And it doesn't look like we've done that thus far.
No, it doesn't. But I really hope we're there. I hope we're at a September, October start.
Well, I would suggest the next week they start.
The next week would be good.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, though. It's always a pleasure. And by the way, nothing to do with why you came up here, I'm still so appreciative that you started the kitty for the police officers for the body mics. You were the first to step up. Several followed you, but you were the first. I just asked Director Trelka again today, why don't we have body mics yet? And I am learning and confirm that virtually nobody is getting body mics right now because they have got such demand for them that everybody that has ordered them is backordered, and we are contacting them routinely, and we will have them soon. And I just wanted to take the opportunity again to thank you for that.
Oh, thank you very much, but I had an ulterior motive. I bought stock in the company.
That's nice.
I can't top that one.
No, sir, you can.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I got a question about water treatment plants. Since we got the footing drains, are we noticing any big differences we got this rain?
We have not had one SSO this year.
That's good. So we're saving money, and we're putting money in the general fund, right?
I didn't say that. I said we had no SSO.
No, I said that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Start me over. Oh, you did. Okay. David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I heard rumor in Cedar Falls the other day that Cedar Falls has been looking into a whitewater rafting area. Are we just trying to get ahead of them, or, you know?
We've been looking. Go ahead and ask the rest of the question, and I'll answer that.
Okay. And then rumor also has it that the Johnston Building's going to be used for storage, and we're still contracting with JSA for storage, and we have a building already that we don't use for dog control anymore. And then I guess the other comment that's kind of a thorn in my side, and I'm going to stick it back to you, Mr. Mayor, the grass and branches are getting closer to the fence.
Okay, I'll answer them as you presented. The water park issue has been on the table, Dave, since we started the Riverfront Renaissance program. We've been working on that. The dam was actually built with a section of the north or east part of the dam is open for a water park. We've been discussing that for 10 years, so we're finally trying to start to move forward. That has nothing to do with Cedar Falls whatsoever. The Johnston Building, I don't know where we're at that. I don't think we even own it yet, do we? No. So there's, we're nowhere with the Johnston Building. The grass and so forth down at the park or at the dump is not to the fence yet, and you can still get in, as long as you can. We're providing a free service. And I want to mention that. Thank you. That's a great segue for me to go into, is there anyone else at the guard shed, or, excuse me, at the yard waste site down at the dead end of Eastern Avenue? That's a city-owned facility that's provided free of charge to the residents of the city of Waterloo to take their yard waste to dispose of. So it's very much a convenience that all of you that live in the city of Waterloo pay for. We have come to learn, as I'm sure if you go down there on a regular basis, you will see large trucks from landscaping companies and out-of-county plates, et cetera, et cetera. We're trying to get a bit of a handle on that. Starting this morning, for all of those who are watching and all those here, we now have a gate monitor, for lack of better word, that will start asking for identification for you when you go into that yard waste site. We do not want anybody to be offended by that. I hope you're not. I hope you appreciate the fact that we're trying to keep a yard waste site that's for the citizens of Waterloo, that's a free site. So if you happen to go down there, and you happen to get stopped, and somebody wants to see your driver's license to see where you live, it's because we want to keep that site for Waterloo citizens, and we just can't afford to keep maintaining that for commercial landscapers, et cetera, and out-of-county folks that come in and use it to dispose of their yard waste. So that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have not commented on that, but I totally agree with you. There's a lot of people-
Woo-hoo! Thanks, David. Mr. Dreyer agreed with me. For those of you that didn't hear, counsel, do you have any questions or comments or final comments?
Motion to receive and file oral comments adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Admissed or adjourned? Thank you.